Manic Smith just pulled in. So they're, they're gonna be here. How's your daughter?
Oh, yeah.
And I was happy to meet you.
All right.
Because we've got our meeting on Wednesday, so I'd love to get that.
Get down, all right. Okay.
Introducing.
I would say Jennifer.
I'm sorry, what is it?
You didn't have anything to do with changing.
I am.
Just need to know if the camera to prepare.
Thank you. Actually, I'm gonna open and I'm gonna turn it down to Mr. Cause, who's going to open the work session. Is that right, Mr. Cause? They're, they're coming up the staircase.
Okay, so.
They've arrived. Valerie, Valerie. No, I'm sorry. Stephanie? We're gonna need them up here. I think they're, are they bring their own computer? They bring their laptops. So we need to get this thing set up for laptops.
It's set up.
Very good, thank you.
Wait for that, my head's on table. Hopefully, they'll have the right ports.
We have a couple of adapters, but.
That's the only one we don't.
Okay. Your voice sounds so much better. Is your energy coming back? It will, it will. At least your voice is coming back. So they, they haven't put their hooks in yet. Okay.
They are looking for where to come.
You got a little sun, look at you.
Little bit.
Yeah. Good golfing?
The first day was good, the second day was so windy, it was like difficult.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, so. I just lost my entire. I don't have my. Yeah, but I need to have my agenda. I have my agenda already. There it is. Very good, okay. I don't, can't freak out. I found this, I was going through old papers, look what I found. You'll show it to the mayor, he'll ask. Remember Larry Miners?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Oh, welcome.
It's always the update to your laptop.
Was this for?
Seventeenth. Now I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Cause. Uh, we're going to have a work session on Lake Road sidewalk update with Manic Smith Group. Mr. Cause, can you introduce the topic for us?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam President. Several years ago, uh, the city was shocked and saddened by, uh, two incidents that occurred on Lake Road involving cyclists. Uh, one was a near fatality and the extra, the second one was a fatality, um, that claimed the life of, uh, one of our Avon Lake City colleagues. After that, we began to look at ways that we could make Lake Road, uh, safer for pedestrians, for cyclists. And one of the things that we decided finally was, uh, to really putting forth our efforts to, uh, put sidewalks end to end on Lake Road. And that is something that has been, um, debated about by city councils going back many decades in the city. So this was the opportunity to do it. And at the time that the city took those steps several years back, we went out and we, uh, put out an RFQ for firms to come in and, uh, pitch their ideas and funding options and how we could accomplish this. And since that time, since the selection of the Manic Smith Group, um, we have had great success in receiving state funding, uh, for this project. There's been a number of safety improvements, um, that are going to be, uh, installed over the next couple of years. One of them that has already been as a, as a part of this is the widening of the bike lanes on Lake Road from end to end. Those are now five-foot lanes, but so that's one big improvement. And we're gonna be talking about the sidewalks now and some of the other improvements as well, too. So the Manic Smith Group has a, has a four or five-year history with, um, with the city now, I believe, right? And we're joined here today by, uh, Jason Watson there on the, on the right. And Jason has been here with us before, uh, in many of our meetings, uh, with, uh, Pat Ecci and Sherry Volkros and some of the others. Um, so Jason, welcome back. And he is joined by Andrew, uh, Pichrock. And they are gonna give us an update on this, on the Lake Road sidewalk project. So, Madam Chair, if it's all right, I'd like to turn it over to them.
Gentlemen.
Thank you guys for having us here tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to present some updates, uh, on the history of the project. I will repeat some of what, uh, Mr. Co said about, uh, just how we got here and then a little bit about the current state of the sidewalk improvements along Lake Road. So this is a little image there, uh, up in front of you. Uh, that's really the length of the project. It's really from, uh, the, the west limits to the east limits of Avon Lake along Lake Road. It's about five miles, a little there over, so a pretty substantial length of, of project. Just some quick introductions. Uh, I'm Jason Watson with the Manic Smith Group. Uh, I run our roadway transportation group for the, for the firm and also, uh, am the project manager for various projects. And, uh, Andy Pitts-Rex next to me, he is, uh, really the project manager, deputy project manager for this project, helping out. A lot of moving parts. He's been spearheading the, uh, right-of-way portion of the projects. You see that S I next to his name, that's, uh, surveyor and training. That gives him the credentials to, um, develop those plans and, and put everything together for you. So, um, just real quick, uh, a little more background on the project and how we got here. As, uh, David had mentioned, Avon Lake had initiated a request for qualifications for a, uh, multi, or a ci- multimodal citywide study in around 2020. Man- Manic Smith was chosen for that project. Uh, we did develop a, a, uh, citywide study. But in that process, we discovered that, uh, Lake Avenue, or Lake Road, I'm sorry, um, had a serious injury and fatal bicycle and pedestrian crashes along that corridor at a higher rate than some of the areas throughout the ci- other areas throughout the city. That study was ultimately completed in 2023, but we had already initiated some of the components of Lake, Lake Road to prioritize that area, given the history that, that David had mentioned. Through that study, we developed countermeasures, uh, and suggestions along, uh, along those areas, within those areas within the project. Some of those that are being applied and we'll talk about, uh, a little bit later in the presentation along Lake Road. That study also estimated short-term and long-term improvements for each of the corridors and will highlight each of those corridors with the focus again back on Lake, Lake Road. And then, uh, Pat Ecci, who's our planner, uh, in our Toledo office, uh, he has a, a really strong history of procuring funding through ODOT Safety Mechanism, Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, Safe Frost to School Program, and then also NOACA's Congestion Mitigation in Air Quality, which is abbreviated CMAC. So a little more background, this is really the results of that study. You can see all the colors indicate, uh, areas for potential improvement throughout the city of Avon Lake. And, uh, just wanna highlight a few things here that, um, there are, you know, funding opportunities for these projects that, that you may be aware of, but just to highlight, there's up to $5,000, $500,000, uh, per location that's 90% funded, uh, by ODOT as long as there's no right-of-way involvement, uh, which means right-of-acquisition or, or anything like that. And then ODOT Systemic Pedestrian Program, which allows for up to $2 million per project for pedestrian bike improvements that covers up to 90% of the cost. And that's in addition to MPO, uh, funds, uh, metropolitan plan- planning organizations such as NOACA. So, just to highlight a couple of things, again, that citywide multimodal study did identify areas for improvements along Lake Road, Electric Boulevard, Walker Road, Krebs Road, Miller Road, Moore Road, Avon-Belden Road, and Lear Road. Again, the emphasis was on Lake Road, given the identification of really the, I'll, I'll say the dots, I don't wanna, you know, uh, dilute the, the meaning of those dots, but that's any, uh, accident history or in the case of the, the red dot to the left of your screen is, is a fatality. So you could see the concentration along Lake Road of, of those dots and that's what led to the prioritization of that project, uh, as we went, uh, into that, that phase. So that spearheaded the development and pursuit of safety funds along those, along this corridor. Pat, Mr. Ecci, did, uh, a couple of presentations, which allocated funding for a couple of improvement projects. Would start off as a, a five-mile-long corridor and then due to funding, you know, the way funding is allocated, uh, decided to break that up into smaller segments to get, uh, to make that more attractive for possibilities of funding, which, uh, I know the city did, was successful in getting. That all occurred around 2022. You may have seen some of the date stamps here in the lower right, just to give you a succession of, of time along the project. So we did want to walk you through then each phase. I know there's maybe some difference in phase numbering. We've called them Phase 1, 2, and 3. Uh, you might hear us refer to it as East of 83 and West of 83. Uh, but what we've done is Phase 1, uh, included improvements along the roadway, um, that added spot improvements for sidewalk and curb ramp within right-of-way. So there's no acquisition of right-of-way or impacts to right-of-way. That project, which was ODOT's PID or Project Identification Number, was 107477. Those were, there's where the funds were allocated. And ODOT District 3, um, did a roadway improvement project, resurfacing project really through the extents of the city of Avon Lake. So that was completed, I believe, in 2023, um, which included some curb ramps. I, I wanna say it was maybe a dozen curb ramps and some short segments of sidewalk that, that we knew were, uh, within city right-of-way. So that simplified the process and enabled us to turn that around quickly. Manic Smith developed those plans and then we inserted them into ODOT's resurfacing, uh, project. And again, that project is complete. Uh, what we were able to do with that project is reduce the lane width from 12 to 11 feet, which provided an additional foot in each direction for the bicycle lanes going from four feet to five feet. So that added buffer, uh, just gives you a little more confidence when you're on a bike and it controls the traffic a little bit more, gives that visual separation between the vehicles and, and pedestrians. And then what that did is it, it spearheaded the next couple of phases for, for the work, which I'll turn over to Andy to, to brief you guys on. Thank you.
Sure, thanks, Jason. Um, so Phase 2 involved just filling in the sidewalk, uh, where there currently isn't any and a lot of right-of-way acquisition. So originally, we anticipated around 30-some parcels, um, but our original estimate, um, took into account four-foot-wide sidewalks, which is the city standard, as opposed to ODOT's five-foot-wide sidewalks. And ODOT wanted to see five. So that combined with a narrower right-of-way means you have to take more right-of-way. Um, there's about 84 parcels that are affected currently and some of those parcels have more than one take, whether that would be a couple temporaries or a permanent and temporary. Um, and then this also, this phase includes, uh, RFB installations at Armor and J Cox. If you don't know what an RFB is, it's a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, uh, that helps improve, uh, pedestrian safety. And it's shown on the bottom-left corner there. Um, so the cost summary for this phase, um, which the project identifier is 117317. Um, it's around $2.4, $2.5 million. And its construction should start, uh, later this year, late spring, early summer, and then wrap up late fall. Next slide, please. And then this is a de- depiction of the RFB that's proposed, uh, just west of, uh, I think it's Covlin Drive and J Cox.
So we're, we're actually going to, on this, in this segment, and the next segment will show you, is that all the pedestrian access to sidewalks will be added to the south side of the roadway because there was very limited right-of-way or, or the opportunity to expand right-of-way on the north side between Armor and J Cox. So that, what we call mid-block crossing, R RFB, the flashing beacons, uh, we're directing pedestrians to cross the street from the north side to the south side between those two roadways.
Very good. And then this is the RFB that's proposed, uh, west of Armor Road. So then that takes us to Phase 3, um, and we're still in the process of submitting, uh, the right-of-way set, uh, now. But it's the same idea, uh, this is west of 83 and it's to install sidewalks where there currently isn't any. There's a lot less right-of-way acquisition with this one, um, because it has a wider existing right-of-way. And with this one, it's interesting because there's actually gonna be about a half a dozen city parcels that need acquisition and ODOT wants dedication plaques for those parcels, not just formal takes. Um, so it's a little bit more involved that way. Um, and then there's gonna be two PHBs, which are, um, pedestrian hybrid beacons. And they're gonna be installed, uh, near the Beach Park Tower, um, and, uh, west of 83 Lake Road intersection. And then the cost summary, um, is right around $1.7 to $1.8 million. And the project identifier, if you wanna look it up, is 119923. And then the construction, um, is gonna hopefully kick off in '27. And then this depicts the Miller Road PHB location.
Which is the Beach, Beach Park Tower, uh, crossing. There's an existing signal there that's gonna be replaced by the PHB. Again, there's the brighter, newer, uh, crossing at that location, just west of the old power plant.
And then, um, the proposed location currently is just west of 83, um, but we'd like to move it down farther toward the Aquatic Center. But that has not been finalized yet. That's why it's, uh, dashed yellow as opposed to.
And the consideration for the potential relocation of that PHB has a couple of, uh, caveats to it. Is that, uh, this, this location is fairly close to the intersection. PHBs typically you wanna be there right at or a little bit further away because what happens is, is people driving cars will start to accelerate and they don't anticipate a crosswalk being 20 or 30 or 50 feet from the intersection. They typically anticipate a crosswalk being right at an intersection or what we call mid-block. And, uh, we're looking at, uh, possibly putting this PHB right near the Aquatic Center entrance. Uh, we thought that was a good alternative. What drove this decision is there are quite a few utilities in existence, overhead utilities and underground utilities. And the PHB has a large foundation that's required to hold up that crossbar that you saw a couple of slides back. So this is what a PHB looks like. It's more like a traditional signal as opposed to the R RFB. And it's actuated by the pedestrian who wants to cross and will change the lights from yellow to, to red, uh, to, to garner the attention. But, uh, again, you know, there's quite a bit of anticipated pedestrian traffic to the Aquatic Center there. So that wraps up our presentation. We did want to, uh, see if there's any questions, uh, that we can help answer.
Councilpeople, uh, who would like to ask the first question, Mr. Cause?
Yeah, thank you. Um, before I ask a couple of questions, uh, Mr. Howard is here as well, too. I don't know if there's anything that Mr. Howard wanted to add as our city engineer to that? Okay.
Thank you.
The, the only thing that I have is, once again, thank you, gentlemen. Um, thank you for, and Manic Smith, uh, Group for, for all your work with this. It's, it's been a long time and we got a few more years and we're getting there. As, before a decision is made with regard to the relocation, possible relocation of that second pedestrian hybrid beacon, um, I think that we're gonna have to have some discussions with the city's, uh, Safety Committee and Council as a whole before that decision is made. If that's all right, Mr. Mayor, uh, before anything is formally decided. I think we really need to, to discuss that, where that location can be the best spot for it. And, oh, and the other thing that I wanted to say about the pedestrian hybrid beacons, if people wanna know, where, where can I see an example of where one of these are? Lake Road, um, similar situation, Lakeview Park, um, right there, they have a pedestrian hybrid beacon at Lakeview Park in Lorraine. So it, you'll see that, you'll see one there. And, uh, again, what this does, like they said, it, it will actually stop traffic and not blink and be a warning signal like our current, our RFBs are there. This will actually, uh, cars will be required to stop. So, uh, there's an example of what one looks like about seven miles down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cause. Anybody else to my right? Anybody to my left? Mr. Super.
Yeah, Mr. Cause, I would agree with that review on that because I, I really think that if you move it down to where you wanna put it, it's, it will be useless. You know, and I think closer to 83, um, even if we can look at across from the park by the boat, where the boats are in the park. And I know you guys have some issues on where it's gonna go, but I think you need to work a little bit better with us. The other thing is on the, uh, citywide traffic study that you put out in 2023, if we can get a copy of that, I think that EA Environmental Affairs Advisory Board is looking at a, uh, bicycle interconnecting our parks and things like that. So if we all can get a copy of that, especially, especially for environmental affairs, so that they can see that and they can look at that. They may, we may be coming back to talk to you a little bit more about what they may wanna do with it.
Thank you. Anybody else to my left? Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Oh, go ahead. This is, this Gentry.
Was the traffic study that was done in 2023, was that, um, a holistic look at specifically for bike lanes? Or was it like traffic in general?
It was multimodal, which is what we consider pedestrian-focused. So bicycle use, walking, so walking paths, bicycle paths primarily through, throughout the city.
My only concern is we've had a lot of new developments coming and it, people are very concerned about the amount of traffic and increased traffic that we've seen in the city. So I didn't know if, if we make new sidewalks and then have to change the, the direction of traffic.
Ms. Gentry is referring to a lot of development off of Walker Road. And what this is focusing on right now is north of that. Um, it's, it's along the Lake Road, so there'll probably be more work for you down the road. Anything else, my colleagues, because I do have some questions myself? Okay. Back on slide number eight, um, it's Phase 2 dated June 1st through October 31st, 2025. I thought I heard that there are two types of takes, permanent and temporary. Can you talk to us what that means? What's the difference? I know what a permanent is, but what's temporary?
Yeah, so temporary usually only lasts for 12 months and it's for the grading, in this case, for the sidewalk. And so it doesn't mean that we're putting a sidewalk onto your property. We need the grading to meet that for the sidewalk.
And there's no permanent need for, like, let's say a retaining wall or something like that that would need permanent maintenance? So once we finish construction?
It becomes permanent.
It becomes part of that, go, reverts back to the property owner.
Okay. And then, um, I too would like to put my two cents, and I know this will be discussed further. Thank you, David. Um, I agree with Casey and you that, um, we do need to discuss more about the location of the PHB location on Lake Road. Um, I'm one of 11 volunteers that maintains the gardens at the corner of 83 and Lake. And I could, I could share with you, along with other, the other volunteers, many stories about how people cross and should not be crossing and what they're doing there. And, um, putting it, if, if it's possible, putting it closer to the intersection, that's where people are crossing. People, I agree with Casey, people do not cross down where you're willing to put it. Um, they do cross diagonally, though, across from the boat ramp, interestingly enough, because there's a little parking lot there, as you can see in your picture. It's slide number 13. It's near the end. It's the very last slide, I think, that you showed us. Keep going. There you go. Um, there's a parking lot, do you see where, um, Route 6 is?
The six sign.
The six, is the number six? Yes, go to your right. There's a parking lot there and people park in there and they cross over to the boat lounge. Then they're working their way over to the Folger Home, um, which is on the north side of Lake Road by 83. People do not cross down where you have your dotted lines, but we'll have more discussion about it. Um, I, I know that, um, there's been some very close, very close to near hits in that location of 83 and Lake. Any further questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. Provocative City Engineer, any further comments on this topic at this time?
One thing you realize, sidewalk does not run down. It, it jogs, it's not gonna be a straight chat down the road. So everybody needs to realize it's gonna jog on Lake Road.
And some sidewalks are already put in by a res- by residents and so we're needing to meet up to them. I think that's what you were referring to with the temporary going in to become a permanent, correct?
In some cases, yes.
In some cases.
I got, I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
And if, if this is something that is not a part of this project or it'd have to be a separate discussion, just let me know. But when we replace the R RFB on Miller Road by, by Beach Park over there, the, the older light that's there, are those able to be repurposed for somewhere as a part of this study? Or is, is that something because it's an older, you know, it's older infrastructure and such, we, we shouldn't consider that? Just, what are your thoughts on repurposing what is already there for some other location?
I know in some cases, and, and I will point to Val and Chris, but in some cases, the reflectivity on those signs degrades over time. And so there's actually studies that can be done to check the reflectivity on signs. So oftentimes, those signs aren't reused for that reason because they're not as visible at night. But, I mean, I've seen cases where those are recycled for other purposes, but, you know, it's, you could go back and forth on that.
Sure, thank you. We'll have more discussions, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you have a comment from our public works director, Mr. Wiskovit?
Just to your point, the one at Beach Park right now is way beyond its life expectancy. And, uh, we were looking at, uh, salvaging equipment from J Cox and Walker for potential use down the road. But, yeah, that one, that one's run its course.
Thank you.
Thank you for checking it out. Okay, thank you very much for coming in, gentlemen.
Thanks for having us.
Yes. Um, we're gonna go on. We're going to go on with the rest of our agenda. And I have a question for Mrs. Ross Maron. Do we need to disconnect the table at this point? Okay. All right. The very next topic with the collective committee meeting is the Finance Committee. Mr. Zuber?
Yeah, I had asked that the owners' rep RFQ be, have some discussion on that today. It's my objective to have a motion on next week's agenda to go out for this RFQ. And came out of Finance Committee at our last meeting, and I think it's it's attached in the revised packet. So I know that the the mayor and the fire chief have both put in their comments. We're waiting on the law director and the finance director. So that's all I have on that. But I look to have that motion on for next Monday.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments on this one?
I would say that we're closer. We're going to need to probably purchase the AIA document that is referenced here so that we can have a clear understanding of what that looks like when we go out for the RFQ. But other than that, I think we're close. There's some minor changes, I think, that may still occur, but nothing significant. Most of it involves just making sure that our scope, which is pretty broad, is sufficient and workable as we put it out.
Thank you. And I have a question for you. Does our city engineer have access to the AIA document? Or do, or can we go to the plan review architect that we have under contracts? We have two of them under contract with the Building Department because they have AIA documents.
I can check on that.
Okay. Because that might be the quickest way, because engineers have their own documents. Any further discussion on finance or? No? Okay. Any for my colleagues, any for the discussion? Then we will see this as a motion for next week. Thank you, Mr. Zuber. Human Resource Committee, Mr. Smith. You have two items?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first one is the appointment of a lateral entry police officer, which was, I believe, handled at the Human Resource Committee meeting on March 10. And the police chief is asking that Brian Kovalek be appointed as a police officer. And my understanding is that we would then do that at the beginning of the next meeting and suspend the rules. Any comments from the mayor on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, Brian comes to us from currently the Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Office. He also worked for Cleveland Police Department. So he's got a few years of experience, and he's a lateral entry, which means he is coming in not to go to the academy, but he has prior experience and will be coming at a little bit higher level with the experience. So we're looking forward to an oath of office next Monday.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor or for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, the next item?
Yes, thank you. The next one is a little bit different than we usually do. It's the appointment of a senior program manager to take Mike Craws' spot, Brian Mahoney. Apparently, an offer has been made to him. It has not gone through the Human Resources Committee meeting yet, but in talking with the the Human Resources Director, a contract, an offer has been made for that position. And she has indicated that she would like for that position to be his, I believe, his, his resume and everything that was attached. And I have no issue with having that go through, but we wanted to bring it to council's attention first. Mr. Zuber, any comments on that?
Just that we did, I believe, have some discussion at the HR Committee meeting on that this was coming. And I have talked to the HR Director about it, too. So I, I think it's one of those things where we want to get him on board as soon as possible.
Yes, thank you. And if I may, Mr. Cause, any?
Go ahead, Mr. Cause.
Well, you're on the committee, too. So, yeah.
Well, I was going to ask, and I don't know if this is appropriate at this time or not, but the Park and Rec Director is here. Is he able to speak to Mr. Mahoney at all? Or is this, or is it too early to do so?
Come on forward. Thank you, Mr. Fatch.
Happy St. Patrick's Day to all.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, we are presenting Mr. Mahoney for your consideration. Mr. Mahoney, although not necessarily background in senior programming, comes to us as a former school teacher and someone that interviewed really, really well for the position. We were very impressed with not only his background in fitness and program planning and/or, let's say, lesson planning, also just the way he really presented himself through some of the, the way he planned for the interview process and some of the new ideas that he brought with us, or brought with him to present to us. And thanks, you know, through even all of his reference checks, just talked about how much of an upstanding person he is, real people person, just organized and just a really good, good guy all around. He is, he and his family live in Avon Lake. They have for the last five years or so, and I think he'd be a great addition to our staff. We were obviously looking for someone with some background or at least some relative background. We feel he brings that and really would just be a great fit to our team.
Thank you. Any further discussion or any questions for Mr. Fatch or Mr. Smith? Thank you, sir, for coming in and talking more about him. Oh, we have a hand up. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I just would now, after I've gone through my committee members, I would ask for the mayor's input on this as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I think there were multiple interviews with Mr. Mahoney.
There were. I can cover that. So our first round of interviews that we had, and again, I should tell you, we had about probably a dozen to 15 applications come in. In a perfect world, we would have been able to present this to you prior to Mike retiring. However, our first round of interviews was with Mike, Patty, and myself. Second round of interviews, we involved Lynn and then Olivia and Jackie from our apartment as well. So we were really pushing through the gamut of all of us because, again, not only a good fit for our seniors, but also a good fit for our small recreation team. So.
And I would say, based upon their input, I think he'll be a great addition. I fully support this recommendation.
Thank you. If I could, I did speak with Lynn today about the applicant. And what impressed her so much was that, as you said, he researched what we have and what we don't have, and he came up with some ideas that I could start running with the very first day on the job. And these are ideas that would encompass your staff, would not alienate them, but would include them, and just a very energetic individual.
Right. And a great, you know, the other thing, he really portrayed as a great patience, which I think will be a great blend for, you know, our participants, it seems.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so I would ask that it be put on the agenda for a first reading with a suspension of the rules next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we had a very long and inclusive Public Service Committee meeting, and the next items are all going to be from that particular meeting. The first item is the Walker Road Phase Five Project. We'd like to go out to advertise for bids, and this would be a motion. Are there any questions about this particular item? We've been talking about Walker Road for quite some time, and everyone knows that we have to break up Walker Road into parts and bits and pieces so that we can obtain funding, zero interest loans, and this is what has happened. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go on to the next item. The Ohio Department of Natural Resources ODNR Forestry Grant for $200,000. So there's a forestry grant that is out there. The city would come up with $100,000, and they would come up with $100,000 if we were granted this particular award. And the two items that they would like to apply it toward if we receive it would be two items that are already on our 2025 budget. One would be for the tree inventory, the other would be for the hiring of the urban forester. If the grant is pulled, because if federal funds are pulled from the state in this particular area, it still does not affect that inventory or tree inventory or the urban forester because those items are budgeted. This would just give us more money back in the coffer. Any questions on this particular one? We want to be what they call shovel-ready. And this will be a motion. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go on to the next one. The Avon Lake Garden Club donation of Karya Olvata, which is shag bark hickory trees. The Avon Lake Garden Club have donated $600 toward the purchase of three hickory shag bark trees to be planted at Walker Road Park near the detention pond walkway that leads off toward the west. There were natural hickory shag bark trees there, and they were removed in the construction of that detention pond. And the garden club would like to assist us in starting to replenish those trees. At the same time, just so that you all know, Bay Village is speaking about putting in Catalpa trees and coming forward and joining with the garden club and with the Tree Commission and the city to celebrate Arbor Day on the 25th. We'll be talking more about that. But this particular motion would be made to accept the donation from the garden club. Are there any questions about the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. The next item is the Avon Lake Urban Forest Management Plan. And you have before you the management plan that the Tree Commission's been working on for about two years with the Division of Forestry. We had two separate Division of Forestry foresters that were working with us on this, and it's taken some time to develop one. The city has not had an adopted urban forestry management plan. There's a mission statement, goals, objectives, actions, specifications, implementation, and action. I'm just going to read what the action items are. An inventory of trees and planning sites of municipal-owned or managed property. That's action one. Action two is master planning design. I have to keep turning my pages. So, okay, action three is systematic five-year hazard assessment. Action four would be the annual work plan budget. Action five would be regular educational sessions, such as Arbor Day activities, big tree contests, tree care workshops, seminars, and on and on. Action six would be long-range five-year work plan and budget. And then included in this would be Appendix A, which are the Ohio arboricultural procedures that we would want to follow so that we have complacency with best standards. And then Appendix B would be the management standards, the resourcing. And you all see a chart in the back, a red and white chart. This tells us what the plan, the work plan is for the Public Service Department, which month they would be performing which services, whether it would be a leaf collection, brush collection, removals of trees, tree plantings, and on and on. And then on the back page is the Appendix D, and that gives the additional information. So with the mission statement, I'm just going to read the mission statement. Maximize the economic, environmental, and social benefits of a sustainable urban forest for the residents of Avon Lake. You can see along the back all of the scientific studies that that supports what the Tree Commission has been working on. Are there any questions on this particular plan? Oh, and by the way, Terry and I, when we took our classes with the Division of Forestry, we had to present the plan to the Division of Forestry of the State of Ohio. And they approved it. There are no questions? Okay. This will be three readings. We go on to the next item. The next item is the Avon Lake Tree Commission Urban Forest Strategic Plan. Again, one has never been adopted by the city of Avon Lake. The Division of Forestry requested that we that we put one together. And while we were working on the city's management plan the last two years, we were also working on the Tree Commission. Strategic Plan's a little shorter. It's only three pages long. And the vision is Avon Lake is a model forest city community with healthy, safe, and appropriate community trees. It lists goals, objectives, annual reviews, and actions. There's seven actions, and then it lists the seven implementations that would be taking place with the Tree Commission. And this needs to be adopted, and then it's filed with the State of Ohio. Any questions, my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, this will also have three reads. Now we will move on to the next item. It's called Plant a Tree, Grow a Legacy Program. Again, the Division of Forestry is in contact with other Division of Foresters in other states, and they wanted us to add this plan. It's found presently, and I'm sorry that Mr. Fatch has left, it's found presently under 1070.02, under municipal park rules. And presently, it reads natural resources and other park objects, stationary memorials and other objects, except in accordance with the direction of the Recreation Department, no person may remove, excavate, take, dig into, or destroy any site, object, building, artifact, implement, or location of a historical, archaeological, geological, scientific, or educational interest of every character located in, on, or under the surface of any park. And what the Tree Commission at Lake added is this new program. It says, residents of the city of Avon Lake are eligible to participate in a program to celebrate and memorialize through the city's Plant a Tree, Grow a Legend, I'm sorry, Grow a Legacy Program. Monetary contributions would be collected by the city's Plant a Tree, Grow a Legacy Program, and it shall be utilized by the urban forester or public works director for uses outlined in the Master Street Tree Program. Now, how this would work, would there would be, and you all have a picture of of an example, there would be a leather book that would be placed at the library. And inside that leather book, you could write in something that would be important to you, be Jimmy's first word, and perhaps you want to donate $5. It could be your 25th wedding anniversary, perhaps you want to donate $50. Perhaps it would be a memory of Grandpa Jake. You might want to donate $100 or whatever it would be. There'd be an envelope. You'd put the money in there. You'd write your contribution in here, not with the money. On the envelope, like a church envelope, you would write your name, your contact information, how much is in there. It's sealed. It goes into a sealed box that only a member of our Finance Department would be able to remove the funds. The funds would go into an account that would be used not for salaries, not for benefits, but for the implementation and growth and maintenance of the urban forest. And this is being done in all other states. This would be in addition to any of the program that's here. We discussed it in the Public Service Committee, and at that point in time, I thought it was going to be in place of. It's not. It's in addition to any other program that we would have in place. Are there any questions for my colleagues to my right? Colleagues to my left? Okay. And, oh, I've spoken to the library. They're on board. I've spoken to the to the law director and also to the finance director, and everyone understands the project. Okay, the next item. The next item has to do with the Resolution Support of Ohio Issue Two for renewal of the State Capital Improvement Program. It's called the SCIP. And this is something, if it sounds familiar, it's because it comes up every five years. And it's not a tax. It is going to be before the public, and we're hoping that the public will vote yes on this. It is instructing the State of Ohio to take funds that they already have and to use them toward the Ohio Public Works Commission. Now, if this passes, this is what funds all of those grants and loans that are given out to cities to develop the bridges and the streets programs that we have. The council has with them a blue paper that outlines the programs. It talks about stormwater, wastewater, roads, bridges that are funded, projects that are funded through this particular fund. If this should fail, then we would be losing the $300, $400,000 that we receive for each segment of street that we usually receive in the form of a grant. We would also be losing those zero interest loans toward the improvement of our infrastructure. Are there any questions to my councilman? Yes, Mr. Cause?
Thank you, Madam President. Could you just give a couple of examples that residents can, that you can point to so residents understand, some of the ones in the city that have been funded by this?
Oh, absolutely. So Walker Road, each project, so from Jay Cox going to the west, the paving of the street, that segment, $300,000. From Armour, I mean, I'm sorry, from Avon Point going to the west out to 83, I believe that was $400,000. From 83 going to the west past the Fire Department, I believe that was another $300,000. And the one that's over by you, David, by Discount Drug Mart, that was another $300,000. The one that we're talking about right now, Walker Road from Moore to the railroad tracks, there's two parts. There's $300,000 in the way of grant, plus it is a loan, and I believe it's $150,000 for the loan. And that's just an example. Throughout the state, Licking County, Storm Throughout the state, Licking County, stormwater improvement project in the city of Petascola, upgraded the old portion of town by replacing deteriorated pipes and inlets. Wastewater in Athens County, the Village of Chauncey Project replaced village sanitary sewers. Northwest, out at Lucas County, roads, the Apple Blossom Farms, and Bancroft Street Road Improvement Project. In Springfield Township, replaced the pavement for a dozen roads in the community. The roads were previously paved 30 years prior. Bridges, northeast Cuyahoga County, the West 130th Street Bridge, which many of us go over, was rebuilt, the bridge over the east branch of the Rocky River in the cities of North Royalton and Strongest, and included a 12-foot-wide shared used path as an added benefit to pedestrians. That bridge was originally constructed in 1952, and it had significant deteriorations. Water, southwest Montgomery County, the Green Hill and Hornwood Water Main replacement project replaced the water main, which has significant excessive breaks and exceeded its useful life. So OPWC, when you hear us say that, that means the Ohio Public Works Commission. This is from the state capital. So once again, it's not a tax, it's simply directing the state in how to use the money that they collect. Any questions to my left? Mr. Luskovic, do you want to add to this?
No, I think you pretty much covered everything.
Finance Director, are we good? Okay, Mr. Smith, hello.
Yeah, thank you. I know this program's been around for a long time, and I see there's blanks there. Do we have any idea in that, how much we received for the City of Avon Lake over these years in total, or we plan on filling that in? Any ideas at all? Because I'm sure it's been many, many dollars.
Right. Mr. Mayor?
John, if you have, well, I would say it's in the millions, just because every year we almost get, I think every year we've had OPWC, Ohio Public Works Commission, money. And as it was indicated, we broke Walker Road up so we could get money per phase and not just $300,000 for the whole thing. So I think over time, we've probably received millions. And if you take out even $500,000, which is a combination grant loan from our budget, that significantly impacts our ability to do roads. So I highly support moving this forward. Again, this is not a tax. This is just a bond program that they use existing tax revenues to pay down. And, you know, we rely heavily on our OPWC money for our projects.
I knew that we did, so I think it's very important that we support this. Thank you.
Absolutely. I have more information while you gentlemen were speaking. This is from the Ohio Municipal League. They put together that since 1987, okay, 19,000 critical infrastructure projects and upgrades to local roads, bridges, wastewater treatment systems, water supply systems, solid waste disposal systems, stormwater and sanitary collection, storage and treatment facilities across all 88 counties to the tune of, are you ready? Everybody ready? 2.3 billion with a B has been awarded to 1,084 local governments for 4,490 projects benefiting municipalities, counties, townships, and other subdivisions. So I think that puts into perspective how important this particular issue is. So vote yes, please, on issue two. Okay. What's before us has an example of a township, and I'm sure that this will be updated for us. So the plan is to have suspension of the rule and emergency passage because we need to report it back to the county engineer and then also to the Ohio Municipal League after our vote. Okay. The next item has to do with the 2025 Crack Seal Program going out for biz, to advertise for biz. So my colleagues have in their packet a map, and you will see that the contracted, not the in-house, but the contracted Crack Seal Project will be Walker Road, Armour, to Ambleside, and Jacoxx, the entire area. So it's the green dotted lines, so the entire north lake road will be down the railroad tracks at Jacoxx, and then from Armour to Ambleside on Walker. Are there any questions on this? This will be a motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. The next item has to do with, actually, the next two items are going to work side by, they're going to work together. So the International 607 Chassis Cab Purchase and the Snow and Ice Package. These are both in the 2025 budget, and they come from two different sources. One is under a state bid contract, and the other one is through a cooperative purchase. And you have two different projects within your packet. One is from Rush Truck Centers, and the other one is from Henderson. And Mr. Luskovic, would you like to detail these for us?
Sure. So I think essentially, you know, what is before, we've got a chassis package using, utilizing international chassis primarily, that's what our fleet is composed of. We've got a lot of longevity out of our current internationals, good, bad, or indifferent. But when I surveyed staff and mechanics and stuff like that, they're very comfortable with working on their equipment. So that was a good logical choice for us to go. There are multiple chassis available, but that fits us best. And then, you know, there's a ton of details there, but, you know, realistically, it fits the heavy spec that we needed to fit, and hence all the different options that are included with that. Additionally, too, we also have a couple warranty items that are also included in the purchase price. Really, realistically, the biggest thing is emissions warranties and stuff like that, just getting us through some potentially big-ticket items that typical warranties don't run out before you end up having to deal. So those are good items to have included in there. Next is the body package from Henderson Equipment. As we're moving through and modernizing things, you know, with the inclusion of the purchase of a brine-making system, this truck will be equipped with liquid capabilities so that we can pre-wet our salt. As we have the two additional trucks that were, that arrived earlier, or I should say late in '24 that we've had out on the road this year, you know, our goal is obviously to be, have probably at least a half a dozen of these trucks equipped so that we can cover all the snow routes and stuff like that, and be able to manage snow and ice events more effectively and efficiently. So both, again, both pieces are, whether it's state contract or cooperative purchasing program.
Thank you. The chassis is a 109-080. That's $109,080. And the equipment package is $126,588. Are there any questions among my colleagues? The reason why we're going to do this with suspension of the rule, emergency passage on the first reading, is that we need to be in line for these to be purchased, or we could lose our spot in the list. Any further questions? Okay, we have those done, all right. The next item is Open Gov Enterprise Management System Annual Software Subscription. So what you have before you is one of five years. This was entered into a contract last year for five years, and the amount that's due this year is $96,409.52. As you may notice, the invoice date is March 3, 2025, the due date is April 2, 2025, but the services are through the end of February. And it's just a very strange way of how they write their invoices, but this is the way that the company does business. And so we are in need of putting this through at the next meeting with suspension of the rule, emergency passage. Ms. Beggers was before us and went through the project for software. Anybody have a question? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
The question I've got is with respect to the modules that are actually included in our Open Gov, do we have the budgeting and planning, the procurement, contract management, and the reporting and transparency modules as a part of this package?
That is something that I am not specialized in. Have you brought that up at your SERP meetings?
Well, I looked at the contract, and I did not see any
Modules?
Modules, and I'm wondering what the contract modules actually include, and if we're using any of those components for budgeting and planning and procurement management.
Thank you, just a moment. I'm not familiar with that. So this needs to have a follow-up, then.
I will talk with
But I would also recommend for memorializing it, that it's brought up at your Communications Technology meeting, so we can all receive the information in the minutes. Thank you, sir. All right, good questions. And I think Mr. Mayor's also writing a note, so he'll be checking with his staff and getting back to all of us. Okay, at this point in time, we have one other business before us, and it is with Mr. Mayor.
So if you've been to Veterans Memorial Park, you'll notice that we have a Howitzler Artillery piece in the park. What's interesting is, is that artillery piece actually was deeded to the now-defunct VFW of Avon Lake. When they went under, they combined with Avon VFW, which assumed control over that Howitzler piece that's in Veterans Memorial Park. They've been contacted, they prefer that it stay there. And in order to do that, the City of Avon Lake will take custody of that responsibility, which just means we have to note that it's there every year, make sure we take care of it, and then if we no longer want it, we have to give it back to the U.S. Army. I think we'll keep it, I think we'll take care of it. And so this motion is just for me to complete the paperwork, to take custody and responsibility of that piece of equipment.
So, and it is an exception, it is an acceptance of a donation from the U.S. Army?
Correct.
Any questions? Any comments to my right, to my left? Okay, that'll be a motion then, next meeting. Now we move on to legislation, third readings. We have third readings, ordinance number 2535. Any changes, Mr. Cause? Any questions?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to ordinance number 2536. I'm sorry, I didn't read the last one for the public. An ordinance adopting the City of Avon Lake Disaster Plan. Okay, now this one is ordinance number 25-36, an ordinance amending codified ordinance section 238.01, Community Disaster Plan. Any changes, Mr. Cause?
No.
Okay, any questions for him? Okay, the next one is Resolution Number 2540, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Avon Lake Adopting Vision Zero and the Lorain County Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Any changes, Mr. Cause?
No.
Okay, any questions for him? Okay. Second readings, ordinance number 25-52, an ordinance authorizing donation to village project and declaring an emergency. Mr. Zuber, any changes?
We'll go three readings on that.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Zuber on this one? Okay. Ordnance number 25-59, an ordinance adopting a job description for the position of city engineer, establishing the qualifications and duties for said position, repealing ordinance number 188-90. Any changes, Mr. Smith?
Not that I'm aware of, but it looks like we have it wrapped up, and that we're going to be suspending the rule so we can get out and start advertising for an engineer. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, then we'll go on to the next one. Ordnance number 25-60, an ordinance approving wage increases for certain non-bargaining unit personnel and declaring an emergency. Any changes, Mr. Smith?
Only that we will be suspending the rule on this so that everybody can get paid.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, we'll go on to the next one. Ordnance number 25-61, an ordinance confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Ruah to the position of Communications and Technology Director, establishing the rate of compensation for said position and declaring an emergency. Mr. Smith, any changes?
No, but we are going to be hiring him relatively soon, so we're suspending the rule on that one as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Ordnance number 25-62, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $3 million for the purpose of paying cost of acquiring, one, a heavy-duty rescue truck with impulse chassis, and, two, a pumper truck with impulse chassis, each for use for the city's fire department declaring an emergency. Mr. Zuber, any changes?
We will be suspending the rule on this next week for, that's how it basically came out of the committee, and that's basically so that we can get the discounts on the fire trucks that the chief has negotiated.
All right, so we're $100,000. Any questions for Mr. Zuber? Okay, seeing none, we now come to the time for public input, where the audience can come forward on any topic.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. In first readings, we're going to have two that we discussed in the human resources portion of tonight's meeting regarding the lateral entry police officer, Brian Kovalek, and the senior program manager, Brian Mahoney. So those will be showing up as first readings. I don't see any other first readings on here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else before we go into public input? Okay, now we'll come around
I am going to suspend the rule on this.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll come around to public input on any topic. You're going to come forward and give us your name and the city that you are from. Thank you.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake, a concerned citizen. I want to talk about city mismanagement and waste of taxpayers' dollars by council and the administration over the past three years in connection with the engineering department and the public works department, which has been in shambles and a complete wreck since Joseph Wright's left in May of '22. When he left, he was both the public works director, and he was certified as an engineer. That whole department has been dismantled, is still dysfunctional as we speak. Many times I've heard, you know, Mr. Smith says from HR, although he's only been on council five months, we need an engineer. Mr. Shamir points out that we outsourced $1.2 million over little over a year to Bramhall, where for three years, that probably would be $3 million that we could possibly save if we had a department. But for three years, people on council and the administration did nothing. You all did nothing if you were part of council or the administration. Did nothing. We still don't have an engineer, and we still got a public works department, which is really dysfunctional. Let's talk about candidate number one. Candidate number one has a certified engineer in the state of Ohio, certified flood plane manager, masters of BA, Business Administration, masters of science and engineering, a bachelor's of science and engineering. Currently, the city engineer, assistant public works director at Broadview Heights for eight years, earning $100,000. Prior to that, he was assistant city engineer for Broadview Heights for three years. Prior to that, he has eight years in civil engineering experience. Candidate number two, got a master's degree in civil engineering, master's degree in environmental engineering, bachelor's degree in environmental engineering, licensed in 22 states as a civil engineer, including the state of Ohio, with city engineer overlooking a $24 million capital improvement project for a city. Also has certificate of professional achievement in financial management from Kellogg School of Management, Northwestern University. Certificate of Professional Achievement in Investment Management from Chicago Booth School of Business, University of Chicago. Let's look at candidate number three. All right, licensed civil engineer, 13, 14 years experience, city of Cleveland, director of all capital projects, also overseeing construction permitting, 7,000 permits per year, in charge of the sidewalk bureau, the 50/50 sidewalk replacement assessment, tree program, tree street program, also in charge of the local surface thing project for the city of Cleveland. $10 million a year. Let's talk about candidate number four. Six years in the public service department, only has an associate's degree from from a branch of Ohio State Agricultural, major landscaping. Those are the four candidates, hypothetical candidates. All right, which would you pick for Public Service Director? Oh, the last candidate also is going to get $119,000 a year. Which would you pick? Which would you consider? You know what the city did? The mayor picked Ebert's son-in-law, Jonathan, candidate number four. All those candidates were part of the 51 candidates. Did you all know that you had three engineers eligible for that position? Did you? You wasted the last three years. You didn't do anything. And a year ago, you had that opportunity. You can't blame Ms. Gentry too much and Mr. Shamir or Mr. Smith, because they weren't on council. But you were on it for three years. You were on it for three years. You were on it for three years. And Mr. Cost, you were on it three years. You talk about wasting taxpayer dollars. Millions you wasted. Millions you wasted. Okay? Tell me why. Did you, did anybody know about those, those applications? You're interviewing engineers. Why don't you call them up and have them apply? You could have had one engineer, who both served as engineer and public service director, saved a lot of money, just like Joe Wright's.
Anybody else want to come forward for five minutes on a topic? Give us your name and the city that you're from.
Before I begin, I'd like to ask to present a video so that I can discuss the video in my five minutes.
No, sir. We're not going to have videos here from the public.
It's not a public video. It's a video of Mr. Shamir, shown several times at his meetings.
The audience, the public, is not going to be showing videos.
So you're censoring what I can show the public because I'm trying to educate them about what's going on?
Sir, you can speak on any topic, and that's not censoring. You have an opportunity to speak on any topic.
I have an opportunity to show you facts of what looks like snow coming out onto people's homes right after the implosion. And it wasn't snow. Because there was no precipitation in the area that day. It was soot, fallout, who knows what it was? And you people don't want the public to see this. You're afraid of that because it shows that we made the wrong decision about the implosion. Because the wind direction brought it right over these people's homes, and it was picked up on their, I don't know, cameras in their house.
Sir, the video, no matter what the topic is, no matter what the topic is, I'm not censoring it because of the subject matter. I'm censoring it, in your words, because it's a video. I'm not censoring the communication.
And the law director has told me in the past that we were able to do that. I've used different things to show them on the screen. I used a chart from ODOT. I've shown other things. I don't understand why all of a sudden now the video, which is very compelling, is not allowed to be shown. And again, he tells me, we can show it on your show bill, which I'm sure I can. Duh. We all understand that. The problem is the place that most of the people see things are on this channel on these days at 7:00. And you're preventing that. Just more censorship by the City of Avon Lake. So, my name's William Zimmerman. I'm from beautiful Avon Lake. So let's talk about our open door policy here at City Hall. I've made mention to the City Council President. I've made mention to the law director about the fact that I believe it's not appropriate that we would have to stand out in the cold and wait to be buzzed in, have to have an appointment. You can't come into the building. This is a public area. Should be. Under Mayor Zilka, there was no problem. There was an open-door policy always. So let's talk about the other places that are public areas here. The police station in the justice system, Justice Department. How about the Public Works where Mr. Lickowitz is? I've walked in there several times, gone to the building or to the Public Works section. Talked to people. Never a problem. Doors open always. Although it does say no public bathrooms. How about Avon Lake Regional Water? I've gone there many times, made public records requests, talked to Mr. Monroe, gone to meetings there. All of those places are open to the public. Not this place. Why is that? We have to be buzzed in, got to have an appointment, as I indicated earlier. So I don't understand why I can get into those other places, but I can't get into here. Now, I've been told that it's a safety issue. They're worried about safety here. Do you not care about safety at the other three buildings? Got the police and fire and the courts. You got the water people. And you got Mr. Lickowitz and all of his staff down there at the Public Works. But you don't care about them evidently because they have an open-door policy. I don't understand that. Mayor and his staff are that important? Somebody really going to come in? Has ever been an incident where somebody attacked the mayor or his staff? Great city of Avon Lake. I listened to the chief tell us that we are 5% safest city in Avon Lake. We missed by one incident from being the safest in two categories. But we're worried about coming in and out of the building here. And the only reason our city is this safe because, A, we have educated people who live here. We're all graying. It's an older community. We don't have a lot of crime, gangs, things like that running around. Mr. Cost always wants to claim that there's problems here. The problem really is, is that nobody's doing anything here. I get behind somebody going 25 miles an hour on Lake Road. I have to go 25 miles an hour on Lake Road because there's double yellow on all of our roads. You can't pass anybody anywhere, even if they're going 25 miles an hour. We've made this into a small tyrant area. Double-yellow lines on north and south, east and west, wherever you're going. You can't get anywhere quickly if somebody doesn't go the speed limit. Let alone the speed limit is 45 once you get over the tracks into Avon. But even the residents in Avon Lake don't even go 45 when they get into Avon. From my experience. I've followed plenty of people who are still going 35. I find it remarkable that these are the kind of things we have to worry about in our city. We don't have crime here. Oh, wait. I can tell you of an instance or two where I've been experiencing crime. But nobody cares about that. Because that was a couple of years ago now, so it doesn't matter. So again, I will ask, why would all these buildings be open but not City Hall? Shouldn't it be a problem? Should be able to come and go. Should be able to get in. Should be able to see somebody if you want, without an appointment. As I've said before, a friend of mine once said, "Everybody knows the Three Stooges." But do you know the three corrupt politicians here in Avon Lake? Take a moment and think about it.
Any further input? Mr. Mayor, yes, please.
I'd like to respond to his
Excuse me.
Not allowed.
Council President is asking for Mr. Mayor to speak.
I'm walking out, don't you worry. Problem is
Madam President, Madam President, point of order.
Yes, sir.
I think general consensus would allow for the rules to be utilized to council's consent. If you ask for general consensus on if the mayor can respond?
That's a good, that's a good comment. To my right, do we have a general consent that the mayor may respond?
Yes.
Yes.
To my left, do we have general consent? Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, would you please go forward and speak?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Zimmerman raised a question about the building and how it was different than the other three. So he highlighted the Public Works Department, the courts, and Avon Lake Regional Water. Each one of those buildings has a secured lobby. So when you open the open door on the outside, you enter an area which has a secured lobby. In the City of Avon Lake, City Hall, we do not have a secure lobby. If you enter into the building, and that door was unlocked, you have access to the entire building without any security whatsoever. So there's a significant difference. And I believe that the building was first secured during COVID time and has been ever since. And we are going to be hiring an architectural firm. One of the first things I want them to look at is to create a secure lobby so that residents can walk into our building and can access as needed. Right now, unfortunately, we don't have that ability to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I could, with all due respect, Mr. Zilka, the former mayor, did lock the building because there was an incident that he felt jeopardized the safety of the former zoning administrator and himself. And I happened to be in the building trying to leave when it was being locked at that point, and I asked the question. So I witnessed that particular situation. Thank you. Thank you. Now we're going to adjourn, and we will see you at our next meeting, which is going to be the 24th, next Monday, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.